Thank you. At this time, if you would, rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have public comments coming before us. I think we're going to let them run for 30 minutes and then we'll take a motion to continue if we need to continue at that point. Dr. Bryan, if you will.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, I apologize up front. I missed putting out someone's name tonight. I apologize. I'll get started. Sheriff Tracy Porter, 1573 Crystal Road, San Francisco, Carolina. I do not believe that Lieutenant Colonel retired Sherilyn Lomond went to Washington, D.C. with the intent to participate in criminal activity. Nor do I believe that she did participate in any of the horrific criminal activity that took place that day. What I do believe is that she went to D.C. to exercise her right as an American to support the President of the United States. Sherilyn Lomond fought as a highly decorated member of our military for 33 years for our country. She continues to fight every day for our accounting, especially our students. Sherilyn always demonstrates a sense of service and is always finding ways to give back and volunteer every time to better our county. I stand in support of Sherilyn Lomond for not only what she does to help the county, but in support of her having those same rights that we all do. Praying for the safety and good health of all students and staff at the LCS. John Landley, 112 West Newton Forest Drive. Please recognize area citizens' first amendment rights to allow their voice to be heard, regardless of whether they agree or disagree with your viewpoint or political persuasion.
Please comment, Madam Chair. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, before we proceed, the chair's decision, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, ma'am, let's hear it.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve all public comments as an official part of the minutes with the redaction of names, addresses of any minors to protected privacy and adhered to the family education rights and privacy.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we have the Lee County Schools' vision and policy. I have Ms. Lomond, the vision statement, please.
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovation, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you. And Ms. Hilliard, I have you with the code of ethics, please.
Code of Ethics for School Board Members Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board. Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the bases of the Board. Avoid the misuse of public funds. Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you. At this time, we have the agenda before us. There has been some concern raised with an item that is currently slated on the agenda for closed session, and that is our attorney's report. There was a request that we move that into open session. Is that still desired, to move that to open session? Mr. Love, is there any problem with moving your report into the open session area of the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Hearing none, in that case, I would like a motion, please, to amend the agenda, moving the attorney's report from closed session and making that item number six, I guess, a new business?
Some of it.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda accordingly. Any discussion?
Ma'am, I would just like to note that the reason this came across is because North Carolina State Statute 143, 31811, closed session, paragraph A and C, do not permit this Board to use closed session to consider qualifications, competence, or performance of or removal of any board member. That is also inconsistent with our close, I mean, both of our school board policies. 2321, section C, says the same exact thing that the laws is. So I think doing anything different than moving it to closed session would put us in a position where we're excluding the public from observing and judging the proceeding under the provision of the North Carolina Open Means Law.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we'll proceed to the vote. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the amendment is now agenda. If I say that backwards? The agenda is now amended. Motion to approve the agenda or any additional amendments that need to be discussed at this time?
I'm going to make the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, proceeds to the vote. All in favor of approving the agenda as amended? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. There are none opposed. At this time, we have the minutes of the regular board meeting from 112, 2021.
Motion to approve the minutes after then.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second discussion.
Now, I would like to discuss the FERCA violation. I'm concerned a little bit in reference to parents who have communicated their concerns in reference to having their minors' names listed with their addresses that was put out there. We have, in those comments, which was asked to be put as part of our permanent minutes, we actually have 46 comments from the students, 13 used faked or incomplete addresses, three used faked or incomplete names, and 15 comments were clearly definitive, containing false and humorous statements. My recommendation as the Board is that we do not approve having those added to our minutes where the children's information is disclosed.
Okay. Mr. Love, I had actually asked Mr. Love to look at this, because she brought this to my attention, and he has an opinion on that. Mr. Love, if you would, share that.
Well, overdue.
Mr. Love, he will come to the microphone just for the purpose of everybody hearing you.
Policy 2310, public participation in board meetings. It states that the sign-up sheet I sent this letter is likely to be given to you tonight says the name and address of the person wishing to address the board. If the individual is speaking on behalf of the group, the group will be identified. Materials presented to the board will be submitted at the time the chair recognizes the speaker. The sign-up sheet will be placed in a manner to allow citizens to sign 30 minutes prior to the meeting and will be collected by the board 5 minutes prior to the call. There's no qualification as to age. We've had young people.
In pre-COVID days, you're saying, "Come to our podium." Okay.
And, of course, it's an unusual time, but the policy does not require. It has to be an adult. A minor can speak and ask.
Okay. The understated standing I had from reading through the FERCA regulations and everything as well is that a student's name and address is considered directory information. The newspaper could ask us, "Who is that star baseball pitcher?" And we would have to release that information.
You have directory information under parfa. It can be released.
So from your perspective, is the student's name and addresses, as disclosed by the student, considered protected information under FERCA?
No.
So if the student disclosed that information, with or without parental consent?
Correct.
They have the freedom of speech.
That's right. And you've had, you've had letters tonight that have been from various places, out of county, in county, and there's no way of telling what age people they are.
Okay. Is there anything, I guess, against the policy with redacting that information from the public record?
Well, I think that's up to the Board. That's up to the Board, whether you want to redact certain things, but...
From your opinion, we wouldn't necessarily be in violation of anything in redacting their addresses from the board minutes.
I don't see, I mean, that's up to the Board, and that's the Board's policy.
Okay.
You can do it, I see.
All right. I just wanted all the information here. So we've had a motion on the prior minutes to amend the comments, just like we've had this evening. What is the opinion of this Board to discuss as far as redacting student addresses from that information or leaving it as gifts?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
And I printed off what I could find online from the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. It says, it discusses directory information, just as Mr. Love has. It says, though, that schools must tell parents and other students about directory information, allow students, eligible students, a reasonable amount of time to request that the school not disclose direction information about them. So have we met that?
Yes, ma'am. At the beginning, at the beginning of the year, when you send out the information, they have a right to notify the school in a certain period of time, the administration, that they do not want this information published. And if they, if they do, then it cannot be published and is done. But the problem is, when you take the material as y'all take it last time and this time, how you will ever decide who is speaking or who is writing the letter and what age they are, whether the parents approve it or don't approve, I don't know how you can do that. But, but I assume if you want to redact all the names, you can do that.
I think what caused me to be concerned about it is I know there were parents that were upset that their children's names and addresses were going to be printed, and then they, we got a message and they were printed. And, you know, I think that we don't always know the age of people that submit public comments. However, when a public comment says, "I'm a junior at Lee County Hospital," I think that it's a reasonable, I think a reasonable person would know that that's a minor, that's a minor student. So I guess my feeling is out of abundance of caution that it would not be harmful. I'm all for hearing from students. I think it's fine that they want to express their First Amendment rights. I want to hear what they have to say. But I think out of abundance of caution, it would be prudent on our part, and maybe best practice. Maybe it's not illegal, but maybe it would be best practice when it's printed and distributed publicly, and we know that it's probably a minor to redact the name and address.
Well, what you feel, the Board feels it's best practice, that's up to the Board. But I think, under the way this is being done, I don't think it's possible really to determine.
Identify them prior to...
Correct. And if a parent, when we have some situations normally in the day-to-day operations of the school, and the parents will tell us they don't want this information released, the administration will not release it.
Okay.
Motion to, motion to redact the student names and addresses of those students whose parents had it issued and those that can be easily identified.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If we were to redact January speakers, we must do it for February speakers as well.
Correct. We would redact. That was the motion that Ms. Sum put forward.
I was including my motion, yes.
Yes, sir. So just bring them all in, I'll let it, to the extent that we are able, we would like to redact the minors' names and addresses from the regular board minutes, public comments section. Is there, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of redaction of identifiable minors' names and addresses? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There's none. Motion carries. All right. Got discombobulated. It's an official term. At this time, we have an agenda. We have the minutes. Now we need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of 112, 2021 with the redaction.
Some of it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? At this time, we proceed to the vote. All in favor of the approval of the regular board minutes as amended? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There's none. That takes us to our reports. I believe we have Dr. Poulter. Are you here? Yes, you are. I can't see that far back there. Welcome. And I believe she has some special teachers to recognize this evening.
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Bryan. According to the National Boards for Professional Teaching Standards, every student deserves to be taught by an accomplished teacher. National Board Certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize our most accomplished teachers and generate ongoing improvement in our schools. It's the most respected professional certification available to K-12 teachers. The process to achieve National Board Certification is rigorous and reflective, and tonight we want to recognize our newly certified and talented teachers. During this very challenging time.
Yes.
We have had four teachers who achieved this honor this year. Shannon Willer at Lee Early College, Angela Spurling at Tranway Elementary School, Sarah Miller at Tranway Elementary School, and Lauren Vianino at J.I. Ingram Elementary School. And we just want to say congratulations to these teachers on achieving this amazing milestone, and we want to thank them for everything they do, because they are outstanding, and they do serve our students, our schools, our district, and our community very well. Thank you for your time to recognize these teachers.
Please, on behalf of the Board, extend our congratulations as well as our gratitude for going above and beyond every single day in the classroom and then also to earn this accolade on top of there already. Some day seemingly thankless work, so please do extend the congratulations to this Board. Thank you. I believe, Dr. Bryan, we have some award presentations from you as well. Isn't it great to celebrate the good things that are going on in Lee County? Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is to recognize, of course, because of COVID, they could not be recognized, but to recognize Kelly Jones and her staff from the Government Financial Officer Association for the work with CAPR and developing that. They've done an outstanding job and to be recognized by the Association of School Business Officials International in the presentation of that financial reporting award. I went by and saw the staff today and said a few things to them, just thanked them for all their hard work and effort in supporting our school district. And just like everybody else, COVID has been a tremendous, has had tremendous impact on them and trying to keep straight everything with all of the different funding streams that are coming into our schools, and they just do an outstanding job. But I'd just like to congratulate Kelly and all her staff for all of her work. So thank them very much. Kelly's like, go ahead and say something.
Kelly's standing back there in the corner, so we'll give her a... And the same again. Please extend to your colleagues that work so diligently. We had the audit report last month, and that was just a small indication of the effectiveness of our finance department. And this is just one outside organization that gives you a mighty kneel pat on the back, and we appreciate you keeping us out of trouble and, and doing well. Thank you so much. All right. Which brings us to my chair's report. It should be a very brief one. Since we last met, we've had a lot of committee meetings that we've recorded on our moment that I've been, it's been a pleasure to be able to be a part of, even virtually, just to tune in and see all of the moving parts of Lee County Schools. And I thank all of the leaders of those committees for the hard work and the dedication that's put into them. Secondly, we also had a meeting between Ms. Hilliard and myself and the leaders of the Board of Commissioners and Dr. Bryan and the county manager. I keep wanting to call him something else, county manager. So Dr. Bryan and Dr. Crumpet. And we had a very productive meeting on the 2nd of February discussing kind of the, it's kind of a get-to-know-you meeting more than anything, and getting to know who the leadership was and what we had been experiencing through COVID. And I think that we were able to ask and answer some good questions about our COVID response and the success of our schools. And it was through that meeting that we were able to kind of lay at least a very basic framework for our joint meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, February 15th, at 6:00 with the Dennis Wicker Civic Center. So please, if you didn't get that, please pencil it into your calendar. Again, Monday, the 15th, at 6:00 at the Dennis Wicker Civic Center. And I did email you, I think we got a notice of that agenda from the county manager, about 10 minutes to 5 tonight. So I emailed that to you as soon as I had access to it. And we look forward to Dr. Bryan sharing a lot of our COVID response with the county commissioners and to hear what they have to say as well. The county manager will give an update on COVID and how it affected the county. I think those are definitely topics that we have been hands-on with for quite a while. And so I do look forward to that meeting on the 15th. I think that concludes my chairman's report. Dr. Bryan, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, we are still, just like every other school district in the state, working very hard to, to work within the pandemic guidelines. And those guidelines continue to change every day, depending upon what source you might be looking at. As we have noted before, I had another meeting today with our ABC Collaborative Group, and the research that they are following and producing remains pretty consistent with what they presented actually at the board at the last meeting. And obviously, there has been a, a lot more studies are being either embarked upon or completed that are informing schools particularly in relation to bringing students back. And, and that's something that we're very grateful for the ABC Collaborative to have that information and to be able to share that, not only with them, but with other school districts in the area we operate. As has been customary, I have asked Mary Holly Oates, she is here this evening, and she'd like to give you her monthly update with COVID in our schools.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bryan, and thank you, Board, for supporting the efforts that we're making to keep our children safe and our staff safe. And just as I usually do, I want to give you a little bit of an update of local numbers. It's information you may have already seen, but as of today's situation report that I get from the Health Director, there were 5,050 cases of COVID, positive cases in Lee County. I just didn't think we were going to get over 5,000 this quickly, but we are. Yesterday, we were at 5,030. So we've gotten 20 more cases from yesterday. There are 66 deaths that have occurred in Lee County. The interesting thing about that is when we met last in Fe, in January, there were 46 deaths. So we've had 20 deaths in this month's time, which is, I think, tremendous increase over what we've been looking at over this entire time period. The good news is that, I think when I reported to you previously, of course, last month, we were in the middle of all the Christmas and holiday numbers. But if you look at the cases per 100,000, which is an every 14-day number that comes out, we are down to 667 per 100,000. We were at probably about double that previously. So our high's been in the around 1,200-plus cases per 100,000. So that number is certainly improving. And at the, on the 11th of January, I get a, we get a report or there's a press release from the Health Department about how many cases have been, how many positive cases from the previous week. They do that on a weekly basis. So the 11th of January, there were 394 new cases. On the 18th, there were 317 new cases. On the 25th, there were 253. On February 1st, there were 202. And as of yesterday, there were 166 new cases. So that is good news, that our numbers of cases that are testing positive are coming down week after week. But again, some of that from the 11th, probably a lot of that had to do with Christmas and travel and folks gathering together. The positivity rate today in North Carolina was 9.3%. For Lee County, it still is over that 10% threshold at 11.8%. Yesterday, it was at 11.9, and the day before, it was 12.2. So it's still hovering around that 12% range. And that, you know, that easily could change tomorrow if a bunch of people go get tested and test positive. We, you know, are seeing staff and students who are testing positive. I don't know if we're seeing a variant or not. I don't have any documentation of that. But we have seen some really odd symptoms that, you know, you think maybe, ooh, this COVID, or could it be? And it turns out to be positive. So we're trying to work really hard in talking with staff and talking with families when symptoms appear that may not seem the typical, you know, the five, the five biggies that the CDC and the state look at are the fever, the chills, the shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, new loss of taste or smell, or new cough. But you, there's a whole nother set of symptoms that can be associated with COVID. And so we're seeing a lot more of some of those symptoms right now with our students and staff. Our parents are trying really hard to make sure the kids aren't coming to school sick, but we do have that happen. We do have parents who have had their kids tested and don't identify to us that they have been tested and then maybe come to school and, and we find out that they are positive. So we really need parents to, to double down on making sure if their students are sick, their students have been tested, people in the family have been tested, that we hold the kids at home until we know those test results so that we're not putting others at risk. I've told you this before, and I continue to say that I think school is as safe a place as there is sort of being quarantined in your home, because we do have all those protocols in place. We are working hard, all of our staff, at keeping our kids six feet apart, making sure they're wearing masks, they're washing hands, that we're doing symptom checks and all those things before they come in the building. But, you know, a kindergartner at the bus stop without a mama there is not going to be able to tell you that, yes, I went and got tested. And so we really, really need parents to, to, to make sure that they are safeguarding not only their own family, but everyone else's family by keeping those kids home. Just to say that when we do have to, when we do have a student or a staff member to test positive, we do use the standards the state has for how to determine who is a potential quarantine, and, and we don't legally quarantine, that's the Health Department. But we have frequent conversations with the Health Department about individual sessions. I have Jessica and our own speed text with one another, and I am frequently texting situations and names and things like that to say, you know, what, what do you think about this situation? Because kids come tell us a whole lot of things, and sometimes they're true, and sometimes they're, they've heard things, and so we go track those kinds of things down. If there's a family member that they say is sick with COVID, you know, try and go track those down. But we do look at each and every single case who tests positive and then apply the standard for the definition of exposure. That is, have you been within six feet for a cumulative 15 minutes or more? That is the definition of an exposure. And so we look at that. We have had kindergarten classrooms that we had to quarantine because they just are kindergartners and they were not able to stay apart. We have had kindergarten classrooms that we did not have to quarantine if a staff member or a student tested positive because they were able, maybe they didn't have as many in that classroom space, they were able to keep everybody six feet or at least six feet apart, and they did not have exposure. So we look at every single situation, and we apply that same standard, that same definition. Were they within six feet for a cumulative 15 minutes?
And that's with or without masks?
That's with or without masks.
I wanted you to say that.
That's... That's with or without masks. Obviously, we want them wearing masks, but the standard is, were you within six feet for a cumulative 15 minutes or more? So yes, this class may get quarantined because a teacher assistant tested positive, and this class did not. It doesn't mean that they're any less safe, one from the other. It all has to do with that exposure. And so we look at that on each and every single basis, case basis. Every time there's a positive that pops up, then we go into action in doing that contact tracing. Sometimes it means larger numbers of students may have to be quarantined depending on what the circumstances are, what the situations are. And I can promise you that my nurses and I all are very cautious and very careful. We want, we want everybody to be safe. We do not want anyone exposed. We don't want to put anyone at risk. And sometimes we may, in concert with the Health Department, quarantine a larger number in one case because we just can't be sure if there was that exposure or not. And in other cases, we don't because there was no evidence of any exposure to the other people. We don't tell everybody every time there's a positive case, except it shows up on the dashboard, but that doesn't give you names because basically, if you're not an exposure person who's been exposed to that person testing positive, you have no, I mean, you really have no need to know. Just because you walk by somebody who may have been positive does not mean an exposure. It's if you were within six feet for a cumulative 15 minutes, and that is the standard, and that is what we work from. Half the world has my phone number, so I promise you, half the world does call me. I have parents calling, I have staff calling into the evening, over the weekend. And that's great because I want parents letting us know if they have a student that maybe has symptoms or, you know, needs some advice. What do we do, you know, who do we contact? Or staff the same way. We would much rather err on the side of people letting us know, letting us check it out, making sure it's safe before we, you know, have anybody back on our campus. I could talk on my phone. I don't want to do that on my phone, so. My poor husband.
Because that's all you've done for the last almost year.
Sadly, it's not. Bless your heart, you know, if this was all you had to do.
I know.
I hear you.
I don't mean that's all you've done.
All you've talked about.
Well, I have a great group of folks who work really hard, and we have an extremely good working relationship with the local Health Department. And, you know, as far as vaccines go for our staff, I promise you, we are doing everything we can possibly do in order to have our staff ready. Right now, our staff who have signed up for the vaccine through our internal system, their names are being put into the state's COVID-19 vaccine management system. So the moment that a vaccine is available for us to try to set up clinics, they are already registered. I'm getting emails constantly, well, I've gotten this, is this legit? Yes, it is. Your names are being added to the list. And so we are, we are doing everything we can so that when the vaccine availability shifts to group three, then our staff are already in the system. And it's just a matter of, I mean, we've already internalized how we're going to set it up, where we're going to set it up, all those kinds of things so that we can be ready to make sure our staff get that vaccine just as quickly as possible. It's just a matter of availability. They did 1,100-plus vaccines today over at the Civic Center. They are, the Health Department is...
And those were second vaccinations?
They were second vaccines, yes. And so the Health Department is doing over 1,500 vaccines a week. And currently, I think the latest I saw was that about 10% of Lee County's population has had at least one vaccine. So they're working as hard as they can. It's just a matter of availability of vaccine. Any questions I can answer for you?
Yes, ma'am. Would you mind clarifying, last week, we had gotten a message and it talked about 84 students, seven staff members, and it involved five classrooms and a bus. And I understand we went through all the health protocols. But could you explain to us how that would happen, where you would have that meeting quarantined and put aside? Because, of course, I'm sure all the board members have the same concerns with our teachers put on quarantine. I mean, just how many more teachers do we have available somewhere?
And that is a concern, and that's been a concern all along about that we might have more, more folks out than we have folks to cover classrooms. So without being able to give you kind of detail because we are live straight, we did have a couple of students who came to school who had been tested and we didn't know it, that tested positive. And so it was their interactions in two different cohorts, in three different classes, and an EC classroom, a couple of EC classrooms as well. So because one of the students had some issues that they were, we couldn't guarantee who they had had contact with and who they had not, we just quarantined a larger number of students with, in collaboration, again, with the Health Department because technically, they're the ones who issued the quarantine because we felt like that was the safest thing to do. If they are home and they are not on our campus and they develop symptoms, then they're not exposing additional people. And I know that was hard for those families because they had their kids in school and now suddenly I have to have, you know, I have to figure out what I'm going to do with my child. But it was out of abundance of caution because we had an exposure potential that we felt needed a greater net people.
A bigger net.
But ma'am, we actually have something in place that parents are not supposed to send children to our school, not the content of the school, but if the child is being tested, is it not our standard procedure that even if a child is being tested, that the school be notified?
Well, that is, but the parent is, I mean, the parent has to tell us.
I'm trying to make it clear.
The doctors aren't telling us. And so, I mean, they're not going to tell us, so we have to rely. That's why I said earlier, we really and truly have to, you know, have to rely on parents to be honest with us and to tell us when their child has been tested or when a family member has been tested. And, you know, again, if you have a child at a bus stop who can't identify to you that they have been tested, we don't know it.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I appreciate that. And also understand the concerns with the teachers and the staff as well because they've lost communication with their students that are now on quarantine. I'm just trying to look at the great big picture and then the concerns from the staff as well that they possibly exposed with someone in their family who's high-risk and things. But I believe you're doing the best that you can do. But I'd like to reinforce the fact that parents really need to kind of let us know these things.
Absolutely. And that is, that is, we've not had anything to that degree. And it was just a very unusual situation. And certainly, you know, like I say, and we're in the process this week of contacting all 84 of those children's families to see, you know, if anybody's developed symptoms. The good thing is, up to now, we've not had exposures that led to additional cases of any of our situations that have been quarantined. We're hoping this will be the same. But we are in the contact with those parents to make sure everybody's doing okay, that there aren't any, you know, additional symptoms or any additional anything coming up from those students. So that was, you know, that has, that has definitely been a challenge for that school. And like I said, we, you know, we err on the side of caution because we could not be absolutely sure who may have had contact. It was better, and again, collaboration with the Health Department to say we're going to just quarantine everyone who's in those categories of where that, those students come in.
Thank you, Mary Holly.
Any other questions for Ms. Hall?
Could you elaborate on how some counties are moving the teacher vaccinations compared to we want Lee County is kind of not at that place? Because I know other counties have moved up where their teachers are getting vaccinated now. Is it because we just have more of a certain group ahead of us? Or can county commissioners or board education push for our teachers to get vaccinated quicker?
I do know that there were some counties, Davidson for one, I know Union County, had already scheduled teacher vaccination clinics when the federal and state folks said, we're going to change that 75-plus to 65-plus. And so they went ahead and, and went ahead with their clinics, even though the guidelines had changed. And so that's how some counties were able to do that. Some counties may not have the number of 65-plus who are looking for the vaccine, and that's currently where the state is, is with that still group two. I do know that if you have read, there was a county in, or a medical practice in, somewhere in Georgia, that went ahead and vaccinated their teachers, and they've had registered that were 65-plus. So there's a whole lot of 65-plus out there. And when the, when the federal and the state, you know, folks came up and said, we're going to shift this down to 65-plus. And the reason for that is, that seems to be where the deaths are predominantly coming. And so they shifted it down to 65. That opened a whole new, a whole new avenue with folks who were eligible that bumped teachers out of that. Now, we have encouraged our teachers, if you're 65-plus, absolutely, go get it where you can get it. You know, get on the list any way you can. You know, we're certainly going to support you and tell you what we know about where it might be available. You know, we do have, I can't tell you, we don't have people from other counties coming to Lee County to get a vaccine, but the state says you cannot deny somebody from another county or even another state coming in to get the vaccine if they meet the criteria at this point. Some of our smaller counties, again, maybe don't have the 65-plus and may have a different level of vaccine, may have been able to go forward with vaccinating. I promise you, we've had those conversations with, with the local Health Department. And like I say, we're doing everything we can to, to support their efforts so the sooner that we can get the vaccine and can get our staff vaccinated, we're, we're ready to roll with that.
What's your best investment on date for teachers?
It could be April. It could be April. Now, if the federal government, you know, there's a lot of talk about increasing vaccine production and more vaccine being made available to states. And so when, you know, if there is more vaccine that comes down, then that may clear out some of those, some of those backlogs of those who are 65-plus. But, you know, it's just a matter of getting that, that vaccine availability into Lee County so that we can get our, our folks vaccinated.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Anything else? No. Thank you, Dr. Brian.
Madam Chair, on your agenda tonight is a year-round calendar for Trambway Elementary School. You'll see for your consideration and potential approval tonight. I would just like to mention, Dr. Dossenbach is going to be presenting that. We'd like to mention that the definition of that calendar, as it is existing in legislation right now, is a 45-15 calendar. It's formalized that way, which is still a year-round calendar. We, we also understand that there might be some changes to that moving forward that would allow a little bit of flexibility with the 45-15 definition. But I want to make sure you knew that before, before tonight. But I also think it's very important, Trambway is our year-round elementary school, and this board made a commitment to return that school to a year-round last, last summer, when for obvious reasons with the pandemic, that we moved everybody to a traditional calendar. So I just wanted to note that before Dr. Dossenbach made his presentation. Other than that, just to reiterate what Mary Holly has said, we have worked hard. Mary Holly's done an awesome job since December to organize employees within our school district to be available for, for the vaccine. And she has been in contact with the Health Department. I've been in contact with the Health Department to try to assess the availability and to reiterate how the forwarding for employees to be vaccinated, not only with the administration, but this board of education's forwarding. And also this week, a letter was sent to the governor from North Carolina School Superintendent Association regarding asking the governor to prioritize educators to be vaccinated.
Excellent.
That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And at this time, we have committee reports. Ms. Wallnike, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee was very busy this morning.
Oh, yes. I'm loving this committee, by the way. The first one I'm reporting on is the elementary school curriculum and instruction. We met on the 13th of January. We received best practices from Trambway. Before I forget, our next meeting is on March 17. But we had a middle-of-the-year report that came from Dr. Dossenbach, and he talked about as the K3 students are assessed near the district in their approved assessments, which goes before the Lee County operating program. Our schools have already started this process, and as a reminder, the benchmark assessments can be given remotely or face-to-face, which is a good thing. The Sand Hills region formed a partnership with NCAAT. They offer virtual professional development in the area of reading and math for elementary teachers. Each district was allotted 25 slots. And I stand with Dr. Dossenbach as well. I'm extremely proud that they have taken all 25 of those slots. Good job out there. We heard from Amy Clutcherica, I hope I'm saying that correctly, and Stephanie Clark. And probably the best part of the entire meeting was them giving a showcase in their book, A Quick For Reading Success. Our next meeting, like I said before, is Wednesday on March 17 for the elementary school. The next one I have to report on is the high school curriculum. We met on the 27th of January. We discussed the ACT Boot Camp, which is getting ready to start in a few weeks, and the statewide AC testing for all juniors. And that takes place in February, as the EOGs did in the fall. And again, that's something that the students are required to take in person. We also had a discussion about a CTE course improvement from Dr. Gary Hart, and he refined that under your new course on our consent agenda. And that, what that is, since it's under consent agenda, I think perhaps I should elaborate on what that is. That's a second-level course in the marketing pathway, and it serves as a completer course for students. It conforms to our efforts to provide vertical alignment between middle, high, and post-secondary and has a proof of learning industry aligned with the credentials of customer service and sales certification. The consensus of our board at that time was to approve the CTE marketing application course, and that is what you were filing under consent agenda. Our next board meeting for the high school is going to be April the 7th at 3:30. The last one I have, as far as curriculum and instruction, is the middle school curriculum. The middle school curriculum, we had Wendy Carlisle came in. She, for those that don't know her, she's our Director of Testing and Accountability. She gave us an overview of the summer achievement program. And that's where the state allows third, eighth graders that who are not proficient in their EOGs, they can receive additional instructions. And that's only during a specific timeframe where they can be retested again in June. We also had best practices from Jamie Cox from Wesley Middle School. And as you will notice under our agenda under new business, you will find that we will need to approve the summer achievement program that was presented by Wendy Carlisle. Our next meeting for the middle school is going to be on April the 21st at 3:30. Do you have any questions for Ms. Hall, ma'am?
Thank you very much. And that brings us to facilities and technology. Ms. Hellier?
The Facilities and Technology Committee met on January 26th. And we talked about, we have a, the girls locker room at Lee County High School, locker room restroom concession building has been approved, and it is going, it is on the consent agenda for tonight. The item is placed on the consent agenda. And once we pass their, approve that, the plans will be submitted to DPI for approval. It is funding sources, the lottery funds. And the timeline for the bid project is April 21st, April 2021, with the hopes of the work taking place of summer of 2021. The board also, the committee also heard a presentation from a developer asking for sewer easement across a portion of our property at Wesley Middle School and JR Inum, between the two schools. It's a 20, it's a 20-foot sewer easement. And the easement was, it's necessary for them to complete the development of the property off Franklin Drive. It was the consensus of the committee to not make the recommendation on a proposed sewer easement, but refer it to the full board for discussion. It is on the agenda for this evening under new business. And there was no further business, and we adjourned the meeting. And the next meeting is Tuesday, February 23rd at 4:30.
Say that again, say it more.
23rd.
23rd. 4:30. Yeah. And that brings us to the Finance Committee. Ms. Sutton?
The Finance Committee meeting was held on January 28, 2021.
The Finance Committee meeting was held on January the 28th, 2021, at 5:00 PM. We had three main agenda items that we have, have presented during the meeting. First of all, we had a software update. Mrs. Jones gave an update on where Lee County Schools is at with the new software. Initially, the state was paying for the new software needed for finance. The state has now come back, said they will not be purchasing. Kelly Jones stated that Link Software is the best choice present to go with, and finance will need to go live by September 2021, with Human Resources to go live between November 2021 and January 2022. Link's is used in about 50% of the counties of our state, and we would like to go with the newest Windows-based version. And so the committee had a, made a motion by Ms. Kraken to take this to the full board for Link's to be discussed under New Business, and I second that. So that is a part of our new business, and I think you have information regarding the software in the board packet. Next, we discussed 2021, 2022 paydays. Mrs. Jones presented that information to us, and that was approved by the committee and placed on the consent agenda that we have on our agenda this evening. And last of all, we had a board expense summary presented to us that was shared by Mrs. Jones with the committee. That report was submitted to the board as an FYI. Without further business, the meeting adjourned, and the next meeting of our Finance Committee will be held on February the 25th, 2021, at 5:00 PM.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Womack, there was no policy meeting. Do you know right off the top when the next one is scheduled?
Yes, ma'am. Our next policy meeting will be the 16th of February, Education Building, at 5:00 PM. And I look forward to working with Lynn Smith and Mr. Love as we fine-tune our board participation policy.
Thank you very much. All right. That takes care of our various committee reports. At this time, we're moving into the action items of the evening. We have the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda, the fund arrangements and contributions, financial statements, the girls locker room, as indicated by Ms. Halyard, the paydays mentioned by Ms. Sutton, the CGE courts by Ms. Womack, and the Summer Achievement Program are all on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion about the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Second, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing non-vote to approve the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none of the motion queries. At this time, we have no unfinished business. Let's move to the New Business portion of our agenda.
Not yet.
Yes, sir.
Motion for recess for maybe five minutes?
We have a motion for a five-minute recess. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Hey, this is the official Connie Gray of the board. At this time, we'll take a vote for a five-minute recess. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And there are none opposed. We'll reconvene then at 8:33 by that clock.